So first, I will read the resolution. Resolved to appoint the following officers in the Irvington Fire Department for a one-year term. Joseph Trama, Fire Chief. David Dowd, First Assistant Fire Chief. Daniel Billings, Second Assistant Fire Chief. Patrick Calantuno, Lieutenant. Stephen Mangiacati, Lieutenant. And Maximo Trama, Lieutenant. I'll make the motion if I get a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations. I should note quickly that Deputy Mayor Connie Keigho cannot be here tonight. She slept and fell. So I think she's okay, but she's just a little banged up tonight, so she's going to miss tonight's meeting. But she says her congratulations to all of you. So let's start with the lieutenants. I think we have three out of four. Do you have a shout-out? If you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Andrew Lambert.
Of the Village of Irvington, County of Westchester, State of New York.
Of the Village of Irvington, County of Westchester, State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of lieutenant.
The duties of the office of lieutenant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Do you have a chance? Andrew? Stephen? You can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Daniel Billings. Of the Village of Irvington.
Of the Village of Irvington.
County of Westchester, State of New York.
State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Assistant Fire Chief.
The duties of the office of Assistant Fire Chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Ready? I, David Dowd.
I, David Dowd.
Of the Village of Irvington.
Of the Village of Irvington.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Assistant Fire Chief.
The duties of the office of Assistant Fire Chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Heartworts over. I, Joseph Trama.
I, Joseph Trama.
Of the Village of Irvington.
Of the Village of Irvington.
County of Westchester.
County of Westchester.
State of New York.
State of New York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Fire Chief.
The duties of the office of Fire Chief.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Can we do the chiefs and maybe everybody else together?
Sure.
Everybody else. Chiefs, come on side. Is there any?
First decision.
First decision. You're the number one. You're the number one.
Yep. Okay. I got it.
Congratulations. Say, "Quine Ring." Congratulations. See you right now.
Thank you, sir. Our audience, congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Tell the young guys. You're the old guy now.
Congratulations.
We have to say.
Congratulations.
Have a good high five.
Did you take pictures?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Right, right.
Okay, so I only have one announcement, which is on April 28th at the Irvington Town Hall Theater at 7:00 PM. The doors open for a FACE-sponsored concert with Larry Campbell and Teresa Williams. Larry Campbell is probably most famous for running the Midnight Rambles for Levon Helm, but he was also a member of the band for Bob Dylan as well. And his wife Teresa Williams sings. He plays the guitar. And it should be a great concert. Opening for them is our local, probably our most popular local band, Divining Rod. Again, they go on around 7:30. Doors open at 7:00. Captain Lawrence has donated some beer. Westchester Wine Warehouse has donated some wine. And a good time should be had by all. And the nice thing is that the proceeds go to benefit the FACE Committee and all the great work they do, including the fireworks and senior programs and the holiday baskets and all that kind of stuff. So hopefully, I'll see a lot of you there at 7:00 PM on the 28th. That's the only announcement I have. I don't know if anyone else has anything else. Otherwise, I'll move on to correspondence, of which there was none. And then I will open it up to public comments, since everyone didn't leave.
Because it's me.
Sure.
You ready?
Yeah, absolutely. Come on up.
There we go. Tom Cicely, I live on the street here last 52 years. I'm here talking about the parking lot that you guys are thinking about putting or taking in the property. I heard it's only a hearsay, but I don't know.
Yeah, all it was was a suggestion of looking at other areas to find parking. That one, we actually thought we had eliminated as a suggestion because it actually has an educational purpose only or a recreational purpose.
Yeah, I knew that, but like a long time ago, I was here, we were talking about the vans parking, and it was brought up, and then I saw it was brought up.
Yeah, I think it was just, it was literally as an example, like finding a piece of property like that piece of property. So we actually took it out of the comprehensive plan, so we don't have to worry.
Thank you, because it's been so great with having a dead end now and having so much less traffic and parents are understanding to drop their kids off on Main Street and not to double park and come in. It's been much better with our family and our kids.
Great, great, yes. I don't think there's any chance of that happening.
And the other thing is, there's about 10 feet of property from the street to the field, like of town property before the school owns, like where a sidewalk would be maybe. There used to be at least three trees that were there with me growing up that's been cut down, and I know everybody's always looking for a place to plant a tree. You can actually see the divots where they used to be. So I'd like to know if some trees can be planted there.
Okay. Want to put it on the list there?
Yeah, we'll look at it. Thank you very much.
Especially the already coming up.
Yeah, it's a good spot, because there's no trees on this side except for one right here. Great? Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So I guess ask out? Any public comment?
Yeah, why not? I'm looking at you.
Should I be under public comment because whatever's best? Yes?
It's up to you.
Okay. The easiest thing in the meeting.
You know what? I don't know. We can take care of that item if you want to.
Yeah, we can. We can do that as well. Why don't we, why don't we just, it's your meeting that night.
Okay, okay, everybody, thank you so much. Thank you for your time and attention, trustees and mayor. Ann Jaffe Holmes, 22 South Eret Farris, on the steering committee of the Green Policy Task Force for the Village. And we are really thrilled and delighted to seek your approval for the appointment of two new members to the Green Policy Task Force. And Lynn and Rebecca Pelletier. Ann is very, very concerned and interested in the issues of healthy landscape choosing and education of homeowners about healthy landscape practices. Rebecca Pelletier is going to be a major force in the organization of young people to help us educate the public about recycling and environmental practices in the Village of Irvington. So we seek your approval for those two appointments to our Green Policy Task Force. Should we do that first and then move on to the?
It's all together, I think.
Okay, it's all together, good. So the other thing we need your approval for is the creation of a new phenomenon in the Village of Irvington, our Junior Green Policy Task Force. This is a group of young people who've come forward and said that they really care about the environment of Irvington. They've been picking up litter and doing recycling at the schools and in the parks and at their ball games, and they would like to participate in the public education and motivation for recycling properly in the Village of Irvington and our public spaces. So there's seven of them right now, and we'll just read their names. Let's see, I put it right here. Just one second, sorry. Underneath yours. Okay, so our Junior Green Policy Task Force Recycling Squad would be Lynn Shorthal, John Seller, Max Bernstein, James Solomon, Noah Stein, Isaac Horowitz, Cameron Brown, Jack Van Der Spie, and Oliver Van Der Spie.
Great.
Okay?
Great, yeah, I think we're all in favor of that, and we actually have a resolution about it.
Have to get some junior GCHF squad.
There you go.
Get things excited.
Go through the rec department, the T-shirt specialists.
That's true, that's true. Very good, I like that. I like that idea. That's really good. And I have to tell you too, mayor and trustees, we have two high school students working with us currently as well, and two more that are interested in working with us, we just haven't, we have to meet with them. But it's, there seems to be a real vitality of them, they're young people, for caring for the environment in the Village of Irvington.
Keep hope alive, right?
Yes.
Great, so should we make this official?
Yes.
Whereas the following volunteer members are to be appointed to the Green Policy Task Force with a term expiring December 2018, Ann Altman and Rebecca Pelletier. Resolved to create a Junior Green Policy Task Force Recycling Squad comprised of young residents of the village between the ages of eight and 16 years old, will assist the Green Policy Task Force in the promotion, education, and motivation of a clean environment and recycling throughout the village. Further resolved to appoint the following members of the Green Policy Task Force Recycling Squad with a term expiring December 28. I will make a motion. If I get a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, thank you so much.
Definitely in support.
Excellent, excellent, so good. So the only other thing I needed to do was report to you on a very positive and productive meeting we had between Joe Archino and Greg Nielsen about doing recycling pilot in Memorial Park, starting May, just after your next work session, because we have to get an approval on an actual pilot structure. But we're hoping to start it by the end of May with your approval. But right now, I'm just reporting to you that this is sort of the way we're aiming, is to do a pilot in Memorial, because Memorial Park is a place where there's a lot of sporting events, so the recyclables are simple, they're straightforward, and there's a lot, a high percentage of recycling in regard to, in comparison with the rest of the trash. So we're going to be working on that with Greg and Joe, and we're all on the same page, and we're determined to make this highly successful pilot so that we know how to proceed to create comprehensive recycling throughout the village public areas as per your direction.
That's great.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, oh, last thing, I just have to tell you, I'm so sorry, but there's so much good stuff going on. Last thing, I just take a second. The food scraps recycling, I just need to tell you, is being enthusiastically received at the farmer's market, and the first week we did, we collected food scraps. There was 150 pounds delivered to the Green Policy Task Force members. The second week, there was 176 pounds. The third week that we did it, there was 100. And then the fourth week, it's last week, there was 311 pounds. So it's mushrooming, and it's growing tremendously, and the support is very enthusiastic for this other environmental service to the village.
Great.
So thank you very much.
Thank you. I assume that's the end of the public comment. Except if you have something else, so no one here. The consent agenda, have you guys had any questions on that? Otherwise, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Could you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Next is a continuation of the public hearing to consider the 2018-19 operating budget. The public hearing is still in session. A big change since our last meeting was we lowered the tax rate to essentially flat, and we haven't got any comments or complaints about it.
No complaints.
So the one problem is always that flat budgets, so no one bothers us about it. Resolution here, we actually have the details of what's changed.
I do have a revised one. I put on there what has slight change. I just wanted to prove it though before we adopted it.
Sure. It's literally a 0.00% increase.
Right, that hasn't changed.
Does anyone have any comments?
Brenda, what, excuse me, what's changed? Just some of the numbers?
Just from the numbers, the social security, that was increased. Just want to add them up, I did it in haste originally, and I just wanted to recheck it. So now, this is the actual number, so.
Oh, I see, instead of 15, it's 27.9.
Right.
Okay.
And then there was a slight change on the workers' comp, I think it was another slight change. I just wanted to prove it though.
And Brenda, the 75,000 that's coming out of surplus, that's related to the original fund, appropriate fund balance?
Yes, so rigid, 155,000, in this case, I rounded it back to 75. Then it was increased by 75,000 to 250,000 in the tenant budget. And then because of the savings, we were able to roll that back to that original appropriation of 150?
75.
55.
175.
For 175,500, thank you.
We got it.
175,500.
Yeah, well, it was slightly rounded, yeah. Like 175 to 250, now back to 175.
Right. I will, assuming the public doesn't have any comment, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. If I can have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess I'll do the official thanks again to Brenda and your staff, Larry and your staff.
Department heads.
All the department heads for their attention, not only at budget time, but throughout the year. Thanks to my colleagues as well for, you know, working through a lot of this over the last two months, four months, and really throughout the year. I mean, I think our budget process obviously formally starts probably in February, but...
It's just on a holiday time.
Holiday time, we usually get that preview. But, you know, I think what's been so great is that the budget's always on everyone's mind, and I think we're always looking to save money. Like, a great example is the insurance. It wasn't like it started that two weeks ago, that was a month-long, multiple-month-long.
Say, October's time.
Yeah, it's just complicated, and, you know, the savings are large. So we appreciate all that hard work, which, you know, kind of is above and beyond your day of death, so we appreciate that greatly.
I thank you, Larry, too, for the help on the insurance.
Well done. So I will go ahead and challenge my reading abilities. Whereas a public hearing was duly advertised, open on April 2nd, 2018, and whereas the tax rate for 2018-19 shall be set at $7.78174 per thousand dollars of excess value, now therefore be it resolved to adopt the 2018-19 Village Operating Budget with the following modifications from the filed tentative budget. Real property taxes, minus $251,808. Surplus, minus 75,000. Unallocated insurance, minus $16,400. Workers' compensation, minus $299,527. Health insurance, minus $15,000. Social Security, plus $15,000. Library transfers, minus $5,795. Library...
It started with the...
Workers' compensation.
Workers' compensation, okay. Minus 299,108. Health insurance, minus $15,000. Social Security, plus $20,792. Library transfers, minus $5,795. Library interfund revenues, minus $5,795. Library's workers' comp, minus $5,792. Water sales, minus $18,513. Water workers' comp, minus $18,513. Sewer rents, minus $3,800, and sewer workers' comp, minus $3,800. Further resolved, that water rate shall be increased by 4.75% as follows. Inside the village, up to 100 CCF, $6.92. Over 100 is 17, excess rate. Outside the village, up to 100 is $11.48. Over 100 CCF is 28.75, which is the excess rate. I will make a motion if I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Brian, the minus numbers were the reduction from their tentative practice. People were watching them.
Correct.
I don't know if you said that or not, but...
I don't think we did, no.
If you didn't, it might be confusing.
Right. That's how we got to the flat budget from a 198 basis points for everyone. We should also just quickly mention on the water rates, the 4.75% increase, we did not take that lightly, but water rates increased by, I think, 7% or something like that.
Seven or eight from New York City, yeah.
We're actually buying our water for 7% more.
Yeah.
But we were able to keep the rate to about 4.75%. With still the hope that we will close that gap on the deficit and the overall water fund that we've been trying to pare down for the last decade, after two decades of running it up.
Very close.
But, yeah, exactly, very close, within shouting distance now, so which is a great thing also, you can be proud of that. But another budget time in the books, so.
Where's the champagne? That's the very...
We can't...
We cut it out of the budget.
I don't have anyone else having a flat rate on the tax rate.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the key also, it's great to have a flat rate, but sustainable. We actually had the discussion, should we be using more of our fund balance, because our fund balance is actually getting to the point where it's almost getting too big, which obviously is not a terrible problem to have, but, you know, it's something that we're going to consider. But we're in, I think, I think the bottom line is we're in a very, very strong position. Even with the flat tax rate, we're actually using thousands of, $400 less, you know, fund balance than last year. And, you know, we've just had a very good year, so we've been very conservative with both our budgeting and our expenses, you know, revenue side of the budget, I should say, and the expense side. You know, it's not like we're overestimating revenues and underestimating expenses to come up with some kind of fugazi flat rate. This is a true flat rate that we fully expect to come in at, so.
What's that?
And I will open a, I make a motion to open public hearing, consider local law amendment Chapter 213 of the Village Code, be it full of traffic, adding a stop sign. If I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Larry, I believe this was a request from the town of Greenberg to, I think, creating a four-way stop there, or whatever that is, a six-way stop, whatever that sentence is.
Well, yeah, it's sort of a, there's two stops already, Mountain Road and the entrance to Penny Bridge Manor. They're making the through traffic on East Sunnyside slash Taxster into a stop, so the entire intersection becomes a multi-way stop.
It's one of the strangest intersections, definitely a horse and buggy intersection, so.
Yeah, it's a big one, yeah.
Probably is dangerous for horses, but...
So Greenberg is, Greenberg owns the, and is responsible for the stop sign that will be in the vicinity of the former deli, whatever that building is right now. So coming westbound on Taxster, there's already a stop sign for Mountain Road and one for Penny Bridge Manor, of course.
Clear, so easy.
That I respect your advocacy.
Yep.
Don't have to tell them.
And then, so Greenberg was looking to us to add one on eastbound, East Sunnyside Lane, right before Penny Bridge Manor. So that's what we're asking.
Okay. And everybody's going to be in sight of everyone else when they make their stops?
Yes.
Yeah, and that, I used to live around there, a lot of people come up from Main Street, and they're not sure which way is Taxster, which way is Mountain Road, and then the people are turning into Penny Bridge. This is a wonderful idea.
So to be contrary, I think it's actually a bad idea, and I'm not going to support it, because I think that it's actually going to cause rear-end accidents on the eastbound lane of East Sunnyside unless there's sufficient notification, and that's a very short, tight turn, no visibility, within 100 feet of a stop, a stop sign. And knowing how the traffic is there, I don't want to predict it, but I think we're going to be having accidents.
Larry, is there any way to have, I know that you have sometimes the signs indicating something new ahead, like new stop sign, new traffic pattern, is there a way to put something like that up?
We'll ask Greenberg before they go up, you know, I think, because they help us with our signs, to be honest with you. They have a traffic department that is kind of town-wide.
At the very least, there should be, I don't know, I think at the very least, there should be one of those yellow stop sign, uh, uh, stop-ahead signs, like at least right... The problem is where to put it, because if you're, that's also, it's kind of oxymoron to say, that's a narrow part of East Sunnyside, but that's a very bad curve there. You're sort of curving this way, and then this way, and then to the stop sign. So I'm not sure where it would be placed where someone could notice it without them interfering with their drive, safe driving. I'm just concerned about it.
Yeah, and we'll get someone to advise us as to the right, the right location.
Larry, you also told me, Larry, that their traffic department did look at this?
Yeah, yeah, we asked them for an assessment of it, and, you know, they, they agreed that a stop sign should be there, and we also did indicate that we expected to put a stop-ahead warning, you know, back a certain distance from it, the appropriate distance, but again, that's, I need to get those details from them.
They...
Give you a flashing light. That, I mean, that would be the thing you would do, but the neighbors would probably go crazy to have a flashing light on.
I'll ask them for some help with...
Yeah, whatever, whatever the options are.
I'm not...
The most they can make as visible as possible, I guess, would be the request.
Yeah.
So any public comments on the stop sign on East Sunnyside Lane?
Change.
Yeah, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. If I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? So resolved to adopt the local law amendments, Chapter 213 of the Irvington Code, be it the traffic department, we'll stop the intersection of East Sunnyside and Sunnyside Place. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Top one, Nate. Nate? I just, I would feel more comfortable voting, actually, if I knew what the final plans were, but for not knowing the final plans, I just got to register.
Sure.
I have really a concern.
Yep. Larry, maybe you can, that'd be a follow-up, to advise us on what the town traffic committee, or our town, town traffic department...
This is for us. Sure. I'm going to hang by that boat. It's too bad they ran out.
We could have had them come back in and give us a sign.
Oh.
We were going to go back to them. Are they right outside?
Yeah, they are.
Sure. People want to show us their sign or whatever.
Yeah.
This has been a quick meeting, so.
They stepped over.
As long as they don't have a whole stall in there. Listen, maybe you can... The speaker?
Exactly. I think I have it memorized, more or less.
Put your hand up.
Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of New York, Constitution of the Village of Irvington. You should make...
Thank you, have a good night.
Stop, drink. I cannot miss. You just can't, you gotta have it.
And now she's coming out and getting me out.
Mom thought it was a good idea.
Yeah, exactly, the meat work. Overview of the Town Hall Theater Project Plan.
Seven hundred ninety-five dollars. Library's workers' comp minus five thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars. Water sales minus eighteen thousand five hundred thirteen dollars. Water workers' comp minus eighteen thousand five hundred thirteen dollars. Sewer rents minus one, three thousand eight hundred dollars and sewer workers' comp minus three thousand eight hundred dollars. Further resolved that water rates shall be increased by four point seven five percent as follows. Inside the village, uh, up to a hundred CCF, uh, six dollars ninety-two cents, uh, over a hundred is seventeen. That's rate. Outside the village, up to a hundred is eleven dollars and forty-eight cents. Over a hundred CCF is twenty-eight seventy-five, which is the excess rate. I will make a motion for it now. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Brian, the minus numbers were the reduction from their original time of budget practice. Uh, people were watching them.
Correct.
I don't know if you said that or not, but...
I don't think we did, no.
If you didn't, it might be confusing.
Right. That's how we got to the flat budget from a hundred and ninety basis points for everyone. Um, we should also just quickly mention on the water rates, uh, the, the four point seven five percent increase, uh, we did not take that lightly, uh, but water rates increased by, I think, seven percent, something like that.
Seven or eight from, from New York City, yeah.
We're actually buying our water for seven percent more.
Yeah.
Uh, but we were able to keep their rates about four point seven five percent. But still the hope that we will close that gap on the, uh, on the deficit and the overall water fund that we've been trying to pare down for the last decade, uh, after two decades of running it up.
Very close.
But, yeah, exactly, very close, within shouting distance now, so which is, which is a great thing also, uh, you can be proud of that. But, um, another budget time in, in the books, so.
Where's the champagne?
We can't...
We cut it out of the budget.
I don't have anyone else having a flat rate on the tax rate.
Yeah.
And I think, I think the key also, it's great to have a flat rate, but sustainable. We actually had the discussion, should we be using more of our, uh, fund balance? Because our fund balance is actually getting to the point where it's almost getting too big, uh, which obviously is not a terrible problem to have, but, um, you know, it's something that we're going to consider, but we're in a, I think, I think the bottom line is we're in a very, very strong position, um, even with the flat tax rate, we're actually using thousands of, well, four hundred dollars less, uh, you know, fund balance than last year, um, and, you know, we've just had a very good year, so we've been very conservative with both our budgeting and our expenses, uh, you know, revenue side of the budget, I should say, and the expense side, um, you know, it's not like we're overestimating revenues and underestimating expenses to come up with some kind of fugazi flat rate. This is a true flat rate, uh, that we fully expect to, uh, to come in at, so. What's that? And I will open a, I make a motion to open public hearing, consider local law amendment chapter two thirteen of the Village Code, be it full of traffic, adding a stop sign. Now, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Larry, I believe this was a request from the, uh, town of Greenberg to, I think, creating a four-way stop there or whatever that is, a six-way stop, whatever that's...
Well, yeah, it's sort of a, there's two stops already, Mountain Road and the entrance to Penny Bridge Manor. Uh, they're making the, uh, the through traffic on East Sunnyside slash Taxster into a, a stop, so the entire intersection becomes a, a multi-way stop.
It's one of the strangest intersections, definitely a horse and buggy intersection, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a big one, yeah.
Probably was dangerous for horses, but...
So, uh, so Greenberg is, uh, Greenberg owns the, uh, and is responsible for the stop sign that will be in the vicinity of the former deli, whatever that building is right now, um, so coming westbound on Taxster, um, there, there's already a stop sign for Mountain Road and one for, uh, Penny Bridge Manor, of course.
Clear, so easy.
That I respect your thought process.
Yep.
You have to tell them.
And, um, and then, uh, so Greenberg was looking to us to add one on eastbound, East Sunnyside Lane, right before Penny Bridge Manor, so that's what we're asking.
Okay.
And everybody's going to be in sight of everyone else when they make their stops?
Yes.
Yeah, and that, I used to live around there, a lot of people come up from Main Street and they're not sure which way is Taxster, which way is Mountain Road, and then the people turning into Penny Bridge. This is, this is a wonderful idea.
So, to be contrary, I think it's actually a bad idea and I'm not going to support it because I think that it's actually going to cause rear-end accidents on the east side, eastbound lane of, of, uh, East Sunnyside unless there's sufficient, uh, notification, and that's a very short, tight turn, uh, no visibility, within a hundred feet of a stop, a stop sign, and knowing how the traffic is there, I don't want to predict it, but I think we're going to be having accidents.
Larry, is there any way to have, I know that you have sometimes the, the signs indicating something new ahead, um, like new stop sign, new traffic pattern, is there a way to put something like that up?
We'll ask Greenberg before they go up, you know, I think, because they help us with our signs, to be honest with you, they have a traffic department that is kind of townwide.
At the very least, there should be, I don't know, I think at the very least, there should be one of those, uh, yellow stop sign, uh, uh, stop ahead signs, like at least right, the problem is where to put it, because if you're, that's an, also an, it's kind of oxymoron to say that's a narrow part of East Sunnyside, but that's a very bad curve there. You're sort of curving this way and then this way and then to the stop sign, so I'm not sure where it would be placed where someone could notice it without them interfering with their drive, safe driving. I'm just concerned about it.
Yeah, and we'll get someone to advise us as to the right, the right location.
You also told me, Larry, that their traffic department did look at this?
Yeah, yeah, we asked them for, for an assessment of it and, and, you know, they, they agreed that a stop sign should be there, um, and we also did indicate that we expected to put a, a stop ahead warning, you know, back a certain distance from it, the appropriate distance, but again, that's, I need to get those details from them.
They, uh...
Give you a flashing light. That, uh, I mean, that would be the thing you would do, but the neighbors would probably go crazy to have a flashing light on it.
I'll, I'll ask them for some help with...
Yeah, whatever, whatever the options are.
I'm, I'm not...
The most they can make as visible as possible, I guess, would be the, uh, the request. So any public comment on the, uh, stop sign on East Sunnyside Lane? Yeah. I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I go second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, uh, resolved to adopt the local law amendments, chapter two thirteen of the Urbanity Code, be it with traffic department, stop the intersection of East Sunnyside and the Sunnyside Place. Uh, can I, can I get a, uh, second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote.
Top one, Nate. Nate. I just, I would feel more comfortable voting on, actually, if I knew what the final plans were, but for not knowing the final plans, I just got to register.
Sure.
I really have concern.
Yep. And Larry, maybe you can, that'd be a follow-up to, to advise us on what, uh, the Town Traffic Committee, or the Town, Town Traffic Department, uh, would advise us.
This is for us.
Sure.
I'm going to hang by that boat. It's too bad that they ran off.
We could have had them come back in and give us a sign.
Oh.
We were going to go back to them. Are they right outside?
Yeah, they are.
Sure. People want to show us their sign or whatever.
Yeah.
This has been a quick meeting, so.
They're over, yeah.
As long as they don't have a whole song.
They stopped over.
Maybe you can...
Exactly. I think I have it memorized, more or less.
Put your hand up.
Constitution has this, Constitution of the State of New York, why? Constitution of the Village of Irvington. You should make... Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks.
And now she's coming out and getting me out.
Mom thought it was a good idea.
Yeah, exactly, the meat work. Overview of Town Hall, theater project, project plans.
So, um, you have color plans in front of you, I'm not, I'm not going to go in super detail, this was, the reason this is on the agenda, to be perfectly honest, is that there's a, um, there's a grant, um, requirement to have a public meeting on it, um, but largely, you know, we've worked with, uh, we've worked with our designers, um, you know, Connie's been pretty involved in this as well and folks from the theater as well, so, um, basically the plan, um, as you see there is to, um, to really open up the front of the building to, to lessen the planting areas that are in the front and, um, you know, confine them to, to near the stairs, basically, where there's, there'll be the bulletin boards, um, and, uh, and then a small planting area near where the police department is, um, and then there's a few seating walls, which are some of those, uh, gray lines that look out of place, but those are little, kind of necessary walls for the way, um, for the way the land runs, um, but they're essentially seating walls. We also plan to, um, install the historic district plaque, which has taken up residence in the, in the lobby.
Then that's where there's a law now historic to keep it there, huh?
Yeah, exactly. We'll get some special dispensation again to do that. Um, and, uh, and then also what we're, what we're doing is, we, we know that, um, on the corner, there's a collapsed catch basin, which I know you've seen, um, you may have seen, and, um, we are relocating that catch basin uphill a little bit, um, over towards where the pedestrian island is that you see here, the little bump out, and so we're implementing a modest version of a pedestrian, of a sidewalk extension. Not the full size, we're not taking parkas bases away doing it, we're not going out as far as the streetscape plan had envisioned, um, we've, we've had some concerns about turning radiuses and whatnot with that, um, so what we decided to do was, um, we decided to go out the exact distance that we went out on the monument area, if you recall, we, we moved into Main Street by eight feet.
Right.
And this is going into Main Street by eight feet. The, uh, the curved, uh, corner that you see on this drawing is the exact same radius of the curve of the monument area, so they could say, take the entrance into the, well, it's actually the exit, but the exit from the school, the radius there is the exact same radius here. So we know we don't have a turning radius problem up there, so we don't expect to have one down here as much as...
But the sidewalk in between that goes in front of the school will stay the same?
Sidewalk in between, I'm sorry.
The monument and where this is going to be?
Yes, it'll, that all stays the same.
Okay.
So does this, I had a couple of questions, does this red indicate that it's a, a new kind of pavement?
Brick, it's brick paver.
I'm sorry, if you might have said that, I might have been off in space.
No, I don't know if I did. Um, it's, it's brick paver, identical to the red...
Right.
Of the brick paver crosswalk.
And then, so just to be clear about the, um, a couple of other questions, so that, I'm just going to point them out to you.
Yeah, sure.
It'd be this guy here and this guy here, these are seating walls?
Those are seating walls, yeah.
What are these two, they are those just, those are just decorative divisions in the...
What, uh, what I know you can't see in this plan, I have, I have full-size plan in my office, but, um, the pattern, the brick pattern, uh, of, of most of this, so this corner and this corner here...
Is it like a herringbone?
Is a herringbone, which is similar to the crosswalks, and then this pattern here and in front of the police department are actually straight.
Soldier, yeah.
Soldier.
Soldier, of course, yeah. That's, that, that sounds good, so the only other thing is, this area here?
Everything's staying the same.
That's planted area?
Yes, well, uh, no, that, this is the edge of the building.
No, I know that, but I mean...
There's a planted area here and a planted area here, this is a ramp.
Can we get that planted area refreshed?
Uh, let's see how much money we have.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Remember, that's, uh, to be determined.
And then that's the fountain, the little, the little thing out here is the fountain. What is the D? I'm used to having a little D in the corner.
Oh, uh, that's actually the existing, um, the existing manhole, but it's a, it's a, it's a fairly old, it's a fairly old manhole, I think we're leaving, I think we're leaving it in place, I, I'm pretty sure that's what the idea is.
Aren't there some telephone poles along that edge too, or?
Yeah, they're, they're, and they're showing on, on some of the detail plans, yeah.
Cool. And are we not using any arching on, on Ferris as well? The area over here where the, where the police cars are over here?
No.
That's all that's...
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing being done from the, from the entrance of the police department on north.
So we're not, yeah, there's...
Because, and remember, back to the way this project was first conceived, the, um, the project, the intention was to have a gathering spot on the corner with a, uh, an intuitive link to the theater entrance, and as, as you know, the entrance to the theater is in flux right now, so what we decided to do, without, I think, taking away anything here, is we decided to, to work more on the front of the building, um, and if the theater entrance remains where it is, we've, we've set the stage, so to speak, sorry, I mean, to, to be able to lead people to the, to the current theater entrance, I mean, but, but if it does switch to the other side of the building...
We used to do it, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, so we can kind of...
Did we lose a parking spot?
I don't believe so, no.
Because there's five, six, I think that's the count that's kind of at there, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we lost a spot.
Yeah.
We reconfigured the handicap relief area. That, that handicap relief area there is code compliant, um, I don't believe the current relief area is code compliant, so we're making sure of that.
Um, against the, more present question, against the foundation, front foundation, we, we know that's looking good, or, you know what I mean, like if you take the soil away from the existing beds, is that, we don't know what's there, right? Could be waterproofing, could be anything in that area.
Yeah, don't know.
So potential surprise, but I think it's going to look extra...
That's why you don't have, that's why you won't have any plants out here in front of the police department, no.
That's all right. Very handsome to be able to let the, uh, because the building probably was originally at grade with the sidewalk, the foundation.
Well, the picture we have of the opening...
One thing on it, yeah.
Clearly that, that's the case, and it also means, by the way, that the, the two street trees that are directly in front of the town hall that are up now, I mean, they're fairly healthy, but they're up into the wires, that are getting up into the wires, um, that those are, those are gone in this plan, so...
Yeah, no trees.
Yeah, and that was the, that was the plan to, again, to open up the front of the building, put it on display.
And is there going to be any furniture?
Yeah, there's, uh...
Because it looks like there's benches.
Yeah, there's benches.
Perfect for benches.
Yeah, there's, there's some, in some of these alcoves, there's ben, there's places for benches, there's, we also plan to add, um, if you know the, if you've looked at the building at night, you'll see that there's some new LED lighting on the side of the building that more subtly illuminates the, the edges of the building, mostly for security. Two of those subtle fixtures in front as well, so a little illumination of the gathering spots there as well.
Nice.
Nothing, again, very subtle, no.
Chessboard, anything like that?
Uh, we, we didn't plan on that, it's, there's not a lot of flat areas here, that's part of the problem, I mean, anyway, we'll see.
Chessboarded, thirty grand.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Nice.
You ready to add the, uh, your point up?
I know, we, oh, do we have to vote on this, or?
No, no, it's just, there's no many questions, but...
Big trouble. Were contractor joint village paving?
So this is the, uh, same that we've done now for several years with the sister villages of, uh, of Ardsley, Dobbs Ferry, Elmsford, Hastings and Tarrytown, um, we have gone out to bid on a joint basis with our other communities and, you know, by our estimation have saved a significant amount of money by doing that, rather than having, uh, you know, a hundred thousand dollar paving alone, we're, we're combining and having, you know, bits of, of projects of a million or more, in this case about a million. The low bidder, as indicated on here, is PCI Industries, our engineers have reviewed their, um, their bids, everything seems in order, uh, and they received a positive recommendation.
Have we ever used them before?
I, I can't remember, I don't, it may have been one year.
They're not the people that created the, the bumpy, uh, Ashford Avenue, I hope.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure, listen, I, the, uh, I'll save my comments, it's, it's difficult to find a, a contractor, um, as far as paving goes, we've had good years, we've had bad years, but none of them are enough to say, sorry, you can't bid anymore, you know what I mean, even if that was the contractor in, in Dobbs that year, it, that's a contract issue, they, they, they had, they would have had to deal with, but it doesn't disqualify them from bidding, is my point.
I think we've also found that in each, each village, or from year to year, village to village, we've had same, same contractor, so, you know, sometimes it helps you to say it was fantastic.
Yeah.
Dobbs says it's terrible.
Yeah.
You know, we say it's okay, you know, so it, it seems like it's, you know, there's a lot of variability.
Yeah, Ardsley was, was, I, I know firsthand, was very dissatisfied with last year's contractor, we had no issues, so...
And this is separate from the pothole stuff, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We never used them before.
Yeah, I couldn't remember if we did, yeah.
So our engineer reviews the entire bid for all the villages and approves?
Yeah, what, what happens is, um, they really review for qualifications and then they also do some mathematical computations, make sure that all the extended costs are correct and the math is done right, um, but then it's up to each community to pass a resolution to kind of piggyback on this award, so, uh, Ardsley's doing theirs tonight, uh, other communities will do theirs, and then each community enters into their own contract with the low bidder and, uh, handles everything on their own. So for the last couple of years, we've used Irvington's engineer to do this, it does, we do incur some costs for that, but there was a number of years before that that we didn't incur any costs for it, so, and I'm sure it's pretty soon it'll get passed on to another community to, to just administer, so...
How much do you think we saved?
I mean...
I mean, just a wild ass, could...
Yeah, it, I mean, thirty percent is probably a reasonable estimate, but, but it varies. Irvington's paving this year is, is somewhere in the vicinity of a hundred thousand dollars or not much more than that, and, um, you know, we, we would pay probably almost double the cost, the cost on a per ton basis if we were trying to get a contractor to come in just to do that.
Right.
So that's, so our savings are probably considerably more, but, but if you, I think, on average, we've talked about thirty percent.
Okay.
So it's not a small number.
Any other questions or comments?
Whereas the Village of Irvington, in a cooperative relationship with the villages of Ardsley, Dobbs Ferry, Elmsford, Hastings and Tarrytown, has solicited bids for the milling and resurfacing of various streets in the Village of Irvington and part municipalities referenced above, and whereas a public notice for this project bid was duly advertised in official newspaper on March sixth, twenty eighteen, and whereas at eleven AM on March fourth, twenty eighteen, at Bill, Irvington Village Hall, all bids received were open and summarized below, PCI Industries Corp., one million forty-three thou... Montesano Brothers, one million one hundred fifty-three thousand, Morano Brothers Corp., one million two hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars, and ELQ Industries Inc., one million two hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars. Whereas the village administrator reviewed the bid submitted and determined that the lowest bidder is in order and responsive to specifications, now therefore be it...
Should be resolved, sorry.
Now therefore be it resolved, uh, following the unit value's bid in contract and extended total based upon the engineer's estimates of the work to be performed in the Village of Irvington, the value of the work is seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. The balance of the contract is value for work proportioned to the villages of Ardsley, Dobbs Ferry, Elmsford, Hastings and Tarrytown collectively summing nine hundred sixty-four thousand, nine hundred ninety-two, and whereas in accordance with the contract, each partner municipality will separately authorize the contract and be responsible for payment of services performed within their respective municipality directly to the contractor, and now therefore be it resolved that the village board of trustees in the Village of Irvington hereby rewards the contract, hereby awards the contract for work to be performed for the twenty eighteen milling and resurfacing on various streets, in the Village of Irvington, the PCI Industries Corporation, in accordance with their unit prices contained in their bid of April fourth, twenty eighteen, for the work to be performed within the Village of Irvington and the other five villages, and to authorize the village administrator to execute the second contract. I will make a motion if I can get a second.
Aye.
All... Now, in a related topic...
Yeah.
...reward contractor joint village curbing.
Yeah, so, so this year, um, the villages decided, uh, in, in the past, um, curbing was kind of lumped into one contract, um, and what we found is, is that we would typically, the, uh, paving contractors would just get a curbing concrete sub and then mark it up to manage it, so the villages decided, especially the ones that have a significant amount of curbing to do, which is not Irvington, um, to bid it separately, and, uh, you know, there's, I think they'll also be achieving a fair amount of savings on that as well.
We don't actually have any of the shares, the, uh, pot slot.
Yeah.
Our value's zero point zero zero.
Zero.
Yep. But I still get to read it. Whereas the Village of Irvington, in a cooperative relationship with the, uh, Elmsford, Hastings and Tarrytown, has solicited bids for concrete curbing to the Village of Irvington and part of municipalities referenced above, and whereas a public notice for this project bid was duly advertised in the official newspaper on March sixth, twenty eighteen, and whereas at eleven AM on April fourth, twenty eighteen, at Village Hall, all bids received were open and summarized below, Palladino Concrete Creations Corp., base bid seven hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred ninety, uh, three hundred forty-nine dollars, alternative bid eighty thousand dollars for a total bid of eight hundred seventy-one thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars, Morano Brothers Corp., one million three hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred six dollars, alternative bid of two hundred fifteen thousand for a total of one million five hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred six dollars, Consortium Brothers Paving and Seal Coating Inc., base bid one million five hundred ninety-seven thousand, twenty-four dollars, alternative bid a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, total bid one billion seven hundred thirty-five thousand, twenty-four dollars, and Montesano Brothers, one million seven hundred six thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, alternative bid two hundred ninety thousand dollars for a total of one million nine hundred ninety-six dollars, and one hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Whereas, the village administrator reviewed the bid submitted and determined that the lowest bidder is in order and responsive to specifications, now therefore be it resolved. While on the unit values bid in the contract and the extended totals based upon the engineer's estimates of the work to be performed in the Village of Irvington, the value of the work is zero point zero zero dollars, the balance of the contract work for work appropriated to the villages of Ardsley, Dobbs Ferry, Elmsford, Hastings, Tarrytown collectively summing to eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars, and whereas in accordance with the contract, each part of municipality will separately authorize the contract and be responsible for payment of services performed within their respective municipality directed at the contractor, and now therefore be it resolved that the village board of trustees of the Village of Irvington hereby awards a contract for twenty eighteen curbing project to Palladino Concrete Creations Corporation, in accordance with their unit price contained in their bid of April fourth, twenty eighteen, for the work to be performed and authorized, the village administrator executes that contract. I'll make a motion if I have a second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, I was going to mention, even though now we don't have anything from the village point of view, um, just a general observation that in the future, if I do have curbing or even replacement curbing that's going anywhere for some, and there's existing granite curbing, we should certainly keep that as a resource to the village. I know a bundle of it was somehow given away or something a few years back, so, uh...
I'm not, I'm not really sure about the details of that, but I, I do know that where we do have granite curbing and, and it's in decent shape, we typically try to re, uh, raise it and reset it.
And if we keep it...
We'll be doing it in front of the hall, as a matter of fact.
And if we keep, if we do do replacement sections where it does come out because of the overall run of the curbing or whatever, it's good to keep it because then we can fix those other sections that are chipped.
Yep, yep.
Okay, good.
We'll go with the trustee liaison reports?
Well, we had our, basically, is a report from the, uh, Green Policy Task Force Tree Commission, is, I don't know if Alan's gotten together yet with Larry to talk about, um, the tree well stuff, I heard when the, the date, though, was moved, the completion date was moved a year out?
Well, no, the, the...
For the, for the grant, the necessary completion date.
Yeah, they extended it, I believe, till October two thousand nineteen, our, our intention is, is to get this work done soon.
Yeah.
If, the plantings may not happen depending on the season, you know, the right time in the, in the planting season, so it could happen in the fall, but still well in advance of, of the grant expiration.
Yeah, I thought it was relieved pressure, but what I said to Alan was, I thought it meant a little sense just to try to keep pushing ahead.
Oh, we're still, we're still trying, listen, we've got, we've got seventeen tree grates that are going to be delivered, um, at many thousands of pounds, and we don't have a lot of room to store them, so they're, they're going to get installed.
So the other thing was that, um, I just want to bring up to, to, to you, Larry, I think, is that the ARB does mention periodically about their desire to try to get into an that the ARB does mention periodically about their desire to try to get into an all-electric, all-electronic document situation, and I know it's, there's a procedural thing, so I would like to ask you maybe to try to set up something where we could talk, because I know from what, talk with the interested parties being the building department and ARB, because I think the building department has said that the only way they could do it is if they could go to a one, once a month ARB meeting in order to meet the, which I'm not disagreeing with, but I'm just wondering why we have historically, you know, why we've never considered going to once a month, but that's, you know, so that's the kind of discussion it'd be great to have.
I'll set that up, so...
Appreciate it.
So, you and who else besides the building department?
And then Rick.
Yeah.
I think that would be, because I think everyone would like to go that way if possible.
Okay.
It certainly, because every time there's, they're done, and it happens at the plant more trees, every time they're done with a site, they're handing back reams of paper back to the contractor or whatever. And the final thing I want to say is that if you're, if you get a water bill in Irvington, which you probably do get a water bill in Irvington, there's an insert that's, came from the GPTF that talks about the health concerns about leaf blowers and why it's a public education thing to help everyone get up to speed about what kind of issues there are with leaf blowers beyond the noise. And so, it's pretty, you know, it's factual, it's pretty easy to digest, take a look, and hopefully will answer some questions or maybe cause you to have more questions yourself. That's it. Oh, I should say, they come, each part of the, one-third, one-third, one-third is how it works for the quarter. The Irvington Woods Committee would like to thank everyone who participated in the Trails Cleanup Day this past Saturday. Close to one hundred participated, including scouts, students, and many families and friends. In addition to the cleanup, several arts projects were made out of trash and fallen trees, and forty apple trees were created through grafting techniques. Special thanks to all the volunteers who made the day possible. Adult softball has started. The tennis courts are now available till ten PM every day, depending on the weather. Remember, you need a park pass to do that. A few meetings coming up. The next meeting of RPAC is this Wednesday, April twenty-fifth, at the Senior Center in Sina Hudson. The Woods Committee Thursday, April nineteenth, at seven PM at the O'Hara Nature Center. And the IS CAD Executive Committee will meet tomorrow, Tuesday, April ninth, sorry, April sixteenth, at the multipurpose room in the high school use in the margin, enter the margin management if you're attending. Just a reminder, as Brian had said, the twenty-eighth is the Face Concert of Larry Campbell and Theresa Williams, and the Face Two Thousand Eighteen Spring Fest event is scheduled for Saturday, May nineteenth. A great family event to include food, entertainment, kids' play areas, much more. We are looking for sponsors. If you're interested, contact either Joe Arcino, Mike DiNardo, Bob Greidos, or me.
That's it. Great. Thank you, Director. Janice, I'll just quickly give Connie's update on the Department of Public. They're the optimists, they're prepping spring and summer equipment. They repaired broken sidewalks at two fifty-five South Buckout and thirty-four South Ferris. They're like potholes, cleaning catch basins, and they've just recently completed five training sessions. I guess this is every one of the DPW. They included Hazcom RTK, which I don't know what that is, which also included Haz WAPR awareness, which I also don't know what that is. Then they had work zone safety, trench safety, fire prevention, fire extinguishers, flammable combustible liquids, gasoline safety, hazardous material safety, heat stress, cold stress, and sun safety, working in the heat and cold, as well as confined space and lockout-tagout. So, glad everyone was able to get all their training done. It's just great to see that they take such proactive stance on that.
Did you do water?
I did not. I didn't. I go over this, they're reading water meters as they always do. Spring maintenance of water facilities in the extended winter. Repaired a water main break on Sycamore Lane, and they're doing spring hydrant flushing, which began today, and you'll see signs posted around town on that.
Do you know, I'm sorry, I was just going to ask, reference to today's storm, did you have any reported highway damage or roadway damage or...
Not damage, but there definitely was, was flooding in some areas for sure, but not, but not damage that I know of.
Okay, good. Yeah.
Four inches of rain earlier, I remember.
Yeah, I don't know if we got it here, but it was pretty close.
Yeah.
Probably three and a half for sure.
I'm really glad they had the valve to drain down the reservoir.
It came down so fast it wouldn't have even made it down from the reservoir, you know what I mean, like...
Also cleaned the catch bases, which is great.
Yep.
Oh, it's sorry.
One other thing that was in front of Connie's seat where I'm sitting today is Lindhurst is having a special exhibit June seventh through September twenty-fourth, Becoming Tiffany, from Hudson Valley painter to Gilded Age task, tastemaker, no, tastemaker. And since we have our Tiffany room here and are interested in the Tiffany Trail, that's something to very much keep in mind. For my own report, the village court, we had two hundred and ten charges received and two hundred and ninety charges disposed between three-one and four-twelve. To nobody's great surprise, the huge majority of those are vehicle and traffic. Two hundred and sixty-eight of the two ninety disposed were in that category. Total money collected and remitted to the state comptroller, twenty-nine thousand, ninety-three dollars in fines, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars in surcharges, civil fees of one thousand, six hundred and fourteen fifty, for a total of forty-six thousand, five hundred and fourteen fifty. The fire department, this is the last official report from outgoing chief Tarikone. Emergency response in March, Irvington volunteer firefighters responded to forty-one calls for fire and rescue, a total of one hundred and five to two hundred and eighteen. Many calls for power lines down and hazardous situations because of the winter storms. IFD responded to Tarrytown and Sleepy Hollow for mutual aid. Department training Tuesday, March sixth, nineteen firefighters received a lecture on standpipe operations and advancing hose lines in high-rise buildings. Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty-six firefighters received annual mandatory bloodborne pathogens training. They participated in a program presented by members of the Irvington Police Department who discussed the difficulties involved when an active shooter situation occurs in a public area, such as schools, churches, et cetera. This program was an orientation for firefighters on the roles the firefighters may be called upon to fill during an active shooter situation. This presentation is the first of what will be an ongoing training process for the firefighters and police department members to better protect our community. Equipment, new natural gas detectors arrive to improve abilities to detect natural gas leaks. The fire boat has been relocated to the Tarrytown Fire Boat Dock until the Irvington Boat Club pier is repaired or rebuilt. Fortunately, no damage was sustained to the boat or our lift during the storm. And I just want to say publicly what I said to Chief Tarikone, thanking him for his service this past year as the chief, and congratulations to Chief Trauma and looking forward to working with him as well. One other thing I just wanted to mention, I happened to run into our police chief on the way into this minute, and he and a couple of the officers were just coming back from the wake for the individual who was killed in the River City Grill. And to me, this is really community policing, being involved and paying respects, not just doing their job, but taking it that next step, and thank them for that.
Can we mention about the fund for the family?
Go for it.
I don't know what the details are, but...
There's a good fund to get accounts set up. You can go to, I can, I can, go to my Facebook page, my personal Facebook page, the link is there. So, I was just going to, at the end of Fort John's Day, I was going to thank, you know, the entire police department, but obviously I have a small department, and when we have, we actually two family arrests in the same week, which doesn't happen, your first murder in forty-four years, last week, as everyone knows, and I think they performed unbelievably well from the first person on the scene to the detectives, to the coordination with, you know, the neighboring departments, especially, you know, Reber Task Force.
Thanks.
And Iback, yeah, as well as, you know, even, even to, you know, Judge Lyons, I handled things very professionally when, you know, our little court doesn't often have, you know, six TV cameras in it, and to have him treated just like it was any other case. And I think it was, you know, it was just a, it was such a horrible tragedy, you know, I think it was handled as well as possible by the village. And I think the other thing that I found consoling was that the outpouring for not just the Rodriguez family, but also for River City Grill in general. I was there Saturday night and it was packed, so, you know, I think, you know, River City's been a staple of Irvington for a long time, and Bobby and his team have been an integral part of our community, and I think everyone came out to, to support them, so it was, you know, if there's a silver lining for such a tragedy, which there isn't, it's that and that the community's support and the excellence of our, of our police department, so, and all for our emergency services. Village Administrator's report?
So, just quickly reporting that I attended a roundtable discussion with, at Con Edison Headquarters. They invited municipal officials in and they got an earful from a number of different communities. I think there'll be some positives come out of it. Some of it wasn't terribly constructive, but some was. You know, basically, they acknowledged that their, their communication system basically failed them. It was giving them, their prediction software that they use to decide who's out, who's in, who has power, who doesn't, was not feeding back correct data. And so, they made a lot of decisions off of that until they realized that there was a problem, so they made some bad decisions off of that. So, it, a lot of the frustration that we saw out in the field is explained by that, not necessarily as an excuse, but it's, it's an explanation, so hopefully they'll, they'll put some money into fixing that in the future.
How about staffing of the peer crews? Have they talked about that at all?
Yeah, they, they covered that. You know, they went into the, to the, you know, when mutual aid was requested, and there's, you know, a lot of accusations and, you know, kind of inflamed talk over that, but, you know, it does appear that, that, and this is, you know, just my humble opinion, but it does appear that they were not prepared for the size of the event. You know, it, take it for what it's worth.
Well, they keep cutting the staff, the line crew.
Yeah, but it's, but it's also the mutual aid that, you know, that could have been requested and wasn't until a certain point, so it's, you know, all of that contributed to the mess that we saw.
Yeah, I guess my argument, you know, you can enlighten me, but when you have a regional event that's across multiple states, it's very hard to get mutual aid except to go way, way, way out.
Yeah.
So, it takes a long time to get it in, yeah.
Yep. And the other thing I did on Friday was, I was talking to, to the mayor about it earlier. I had the opportunity to go down to the monument, the person that'll be casting a new monument for the memorials and also doing the engraving of the, of the memorials, and had an opportunity to actually proof the, the old plaque versus what the new plaque will be, which is all the names that are on there. And it took about two and a half hours, believe it or not, to go through every single name that's on there, World War One, World War Two, and Korea, for those that served, and it was quite enlightening, actually, but anyway, so that, that, there'll still be some more proofing to go on. We have a couple of other individuals, Greg Nielsen, and he'll be going down to prove it as well, so he'll, he'll have the two and a half hour experience that I just had. But that, that's on track for Memorial Day, for before Memorial Day.
Thanks, Larry. Woods Clerk Treasurer's report?
Nothing further, Janice.
Nothing further.
Attorney's report?
No, I wanted to say that I made the changes to the compromise plan and a couple of things we mentioned at the meeting and, well, I have to give them to Larry because there's got the master copy, he'll put it in there. And I think, what, want to say on to the final public...
There's, I think there's something to be done at each of the May meetings, I just don't remember exactly.
Yeah, so we should be...
Yeah, I'll, I'll circulate that around as soon as I know for sure.
Make it so it circulates that with the last draft.
Yep.
Public comment?
Yes.
Please.
Good evening, Mayor and everyone. I understand from my neighbors down the street that the green lot that's just off the playground area has been, is being looked at, if it hasn't already been decided to make it a parking lot?
No, we actually talked to your neighbor earlier, Tom. It was actually used as an example of the place you could look to potentially put parking. We determined already that we can't because it's actually deemed to be used only for recreational materials for a school.
Educational.
Educational, educational use only. So, it was used only as an example in the beginning. Even after we found out that it couldn't be used, we kind of used it as, you know, you could try to find a piece of property like that. We just took that reference out, we planned it out altogether since, you know, we had some objection to it, and we know it's not a, we just use a generic, look for pieces of land. We took out the, like this piece of land, so there's no plans for it, and it's protected enough anyway.
And there's no, there's no mention of it in that document anymore?
Right, yeah, they, they seem to think that it was already almost a done deal.
Right.
No.
I mean, I'm, I'm very glad to hear that, but, but to expand a little bit on my concern is, is it just a general issue of, of traffic in, in the village, right? Young children that live on the street, and especially when you have events at the, at the theater and all, we get a lot of people trying to park and all that, and it, it's not the best situation. Is there another place that we can sort of guide visitors to park that's not like along the streets around?
Well, we tell people for the Town Hall Theater to park in the, the Main Street school lot if it's obviously not a school session, which that's eighty-nine, ninety-nine percent of the events aren't, so they are directed, you know, by the theater, park there, so that should be good. I think the longer term solution will be when we're looking at the, the new entrance to the theater will actually be, well, the theoretical new entrance to the theater proposed early days, even much earlier than...
Unfunded, right?
Yeah, exactly, unfunded, but fingers crossed, the entrance would move from over here to that side of the building, and there'd be kind of like a little drop-off area in front, so people would know. So, I think that would take, it would relieve some of the pressure there, and it's just actually a better place to have it enter, as well as it gives obviously a front face on Main Street as opposed to, you know, you can't find what the theater is, and you come down, you see a police department, you don't see a theater, that whole thing. So, that's the long-term solution. The short-term solution is the theater kind of reminding people to try to park at the school lot and walk down.
And we're trying to improve that signage as well, so...
Because we haven't, like, run out of spaces for, for people to park most of the time, right?
Not if they, not if they use the, you know, the Main Street school lot, it's usually okay. I think that the, that lot, we were thinking more of something like, if we're trying to relieve, if we could get, say, all of the shops on the two blocks down and all the village employees, this was the theory, that, you know, that we could find another lot like that, like the Aqua Duck lots use that way. We've talked about using the Astro lot that way, where you kind of, you, people that are going to be here all day, they can leave their cars there, they won't have to move every two hours, and that would also free up spots for people coming in and out of the village as opposed to, you know, Larry who's here for twenty hours a day, he can keep his car hidden away somewhere. So, I think we're still looking for that, you know, mysterious place, that secret garden where we can find something, but...
But it does, it does seem like there's more traffic density going through the village? Is that, is that maybe something I'm imagining or...
I think part of the issue is like, when I first got on the board in oh-nine, the big concern was that there were a lot of empty, you know, buildings and empty storefronts, and Bridge Street was only seventy percent rented, and I said someday we're going to talk about parking issues and traffic issues, and this is not going to be a great day. I think we got there probably about two years ago. So, I think the fact that there aren't many empty storefronts, Bridge Street's a hundred percent full, the Trent Building's now a hundred percent full, I think it's just, you know, with the economy being good in Irvington and the traffic and the restaurants being popular, you get a lot of out-of-town traffic as well, so I think that that's kind of a victim of our own success. I don't think, I don't think you're imagining, I think it's...
Okay. All right. Is, one last thing, is there any consideration of having a kind of, a little mini-bus or something for commuters to take from the train up to different places?
Actually, our colleague who isn't here today is a big proponent of it.
Okay.
We think that kind of creating the Irvington MTA, well, I personally think creating an Irvington MTA that would kind of be a shuttle bus. I think people just like to be in their cars, you know, so I think it's, to change the behavior, I think you'd have to have it like every ten minutes or something, you need a lot of them, where if you said, you know, it'd be here at, you know, half past the hour, here at the hour, I just don't, I think people, they're not going to wait fifteen minutes for a train, you know, I think it's just tough to change behavior. Connie would, Connie would debate me all day on that and say that we should, we should try it. I think it's also, you know, a, I think you could also have off-site parking and things like that. I just don't think that suburban folks like to have off-site parking as much as, you know, we might hope they would to, you know, even if you park at the top of Main Street, you gotta ride down or something like that. I think people just, they, I think the reason we have a lot of speeding is because people have five minutes to get to the train, but they only get themselves three.
Right, right.
So, I think that that's, that's part of it, as opposed to saying, I'll leave a half hour or something, the shuttle bus, but it, it has been considered.
So, and I'll, one thing I'll point out, though, is that, and I know you know, the chapter where we inadvertently mentioned the potential for a parking lot on this street, which is now no longer there, also mentions the possibility of testing out of a jitney van service. So, it is actually in our plan, so we don't drop it off of our radar screen. Doesn't mean it's happening tomorrow, it's just something that...
I know, there's a lot of considerations to, to doing that. I used to live in Riverdale, and they introduced, they had one bus, there's Spite and Dival and then Riverdale Station, they had one bus for each station. I think they were up to three buses by now.
Yeah.
Because it may not take off immediately, but over time, people, you know, they can change their behavior in the schedule and, and, you know, it's, I just think it, you know, especially, I see long lines to try to get up to Broadway. I think they changed the timing and the lights or something, and it just, it just seems like, I think everybody's kind of stressed trying to get from one place to the other and, and whatever actions can be done... I think everybody's kind of stressed trying to get from one place to the other, and, uh, and whatever actions can be done to reduce that traffic density, especially during, you know, rush hour and things like that, you know, is, is, is gonna help us in terms of safety and all that.
I have a question, yes, you've thought about this a bit, so how would you, uh, just, if you were imagining it, what would the route be? Cause that's another discussion, is, you know, that would be-
That, you'd have to do a study or something on that. You have, you know, I wouldn't do that off the top of my head, just cause I don't know where-
Maybe you have not some idea of-
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know where, you know, I, I assume it's gonna be like different, you know, north and south of Broadway, where all of the apartments and stuff are, is gonna be like maybe a target area. You know, but, but beyond that, I, I couldn't say, I just don't know where, you know, where people are gonna, are coming from to get to the train, you know.
I didn't get your name, I'm sorry.
Jim, Jim Carosa.
Jim Carosa, thanks.
Yep, I live in the street here.
We appreciate, uh, you coming out, appreciate your thoughts.
I'm, I'm surprised I'm the only person here.
Well, there was another person.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, uh, Tom.
Sisar.
Yeah.
Sisari.
Sisar probably commented at the beginning of the meeting, too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom, Tom and his son, his son, sir, right?
No, we just can't, it's not put in letters.
Great, well, come again, thank you, thanks for-
Come back again.
Can I see that, um, leaf blower thing for a while?
Oh, for sure. You want, you haven't gotten one, just take it.
Well, I-
It'll be in the-
You'll get one.
Yeah, because, uh, the, uh, admissions of these things are a lot of antine and cancer-causing chemicals.
That's what is in there. Now, if you wanna talk, um, uh, talk to Ann Jaffe, who's the, uh, kind of the coordinator for the GPTF, she was here earlier tonight. But, um, that's, they're, they're the ones that produced that, uh-
Okay.
Check out the village website, there's a lot of information about all of these.
And, you know, your, NEXD is, get in touch with Ann and it'd definitely be a good thing to share that.
It's, it's funny, where I worked is Rockefeller University of Environmental Research, and she knew all of these things. But the grounds crew have got people with these and are just holding my breath, you know?
It's the particulate matter as well that's really bad from these things for asthma.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, review of action items?
Uh, so the two items are, uh, excuse me, reporting back, uh, on information we received from Greenberg with respect to that stop sign and, uh, and then looking into setting up a meeting regarding the all-electronic ARB.
The only other one was, uh, Alan, Tree Commission, you got that on your agenda already, right?
We're meeting on Wednesday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Am I supposed to be there or is he just meeting with you? I don't have to be, that's-
Yeah, I know, I mean, I, I don't, your name didn't come up, but you're welcome.
No, no, I told him I would be, I'd be there if he needed one, but he hasn't said it.
Yeah, it's 10 o'clock on Wednesday, if you're not busy.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Yep. Is that, is all in favor?
Aye.